It's 7:02 PM on Wednesday, March 9th, 2022. And I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting order. And we'll open the continued public hearing of the 40B application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LLC to be known as the sanctuary of Manchester by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, to construct 136-unit apartment complex for which the Mass Housing Finance Committee issued a project eligibility decision on September 16th, 2021, at School Street, Assessors Map Number 43, Lot Number 18, with a town clerk on September 27th, 2020. With me, as this is Sarah Malish, the chair, with me as members of the board are James Mitchell, Brian Solace, John Benares, Jim Dietrich, and Tom Zahn, and I expect Catherine Howe will join us shortly when she gets rid of her technical issues. And Gail Hunter is here to take minutes. This meeting is being recorded. I want to remind everyone to please mute yourself until you're recognized to speak. All questions and comments should come through the chair, and you should wait to be recognized before you speak. Thank you. Our main agenda topic tonight is to hear from Beals and Thomas regarding the preliminary environmental and engineering peer review reports. I believe Matt Coate is on the line. Would you like to introduce yourself and your team and let us know what do you wish to do, environmental or engineering first? Thank you.
Good evening. So my name is Matt Cody.
Of Cody, sorry.
Professional engineer in Massachusetts. So, and we're hired by the board to perform peer reviews from the environmental standpoint, civil engineering, landscape, and we also hired a geotechnical subconsultant to help us out with this review. With me tonight are Andrew Gorman from Beals and Thomas and Stacy Minahan, who conducted the environmental review. And I primarily conducted the engineering reviews, again, with help from some outside consultants. So whichever order you wanted to go first, whether environmental or civil, we defer to you, but we can go from there.
Let's start with the environmental.
Right, so that's me. Good evening all. I'm Stacy Minahan with Beals and Thomas. As Matt noted, I'm a senior associate with the firm and a professional wetland scientist. And Chair Malish, you'd ask that I provide an overview of kind of some of the notable items that we had seen in the review, and then I'm happy to go through our letter item by item, but maybe it makes sense to do the environmental overview and then the engineering overview and then go through the details, but I defer to your preference.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. All right, so in general, on the environmental side for the project, there were obviously multiple waivers requested. And in our review of them, we noted that several, we think, could benefit from some additional information in order to refine them and/or inform the evaluation of those particular waiver requests. So there were certain items, like bernal pools, where there hadn't been an initial delineation, and so it was challenging to determine the necessity of the waiver. I think there are some aspects where waiver requests could be refined to specify, you know, we're requesting a waiver from the setbacks at this in this location, or these are the aspects of the project that necessitate the waiver. There were some waiver requests that were very broad. There was one, Section 9 stands out. And that's a very, that's a large section that encompasses a lot of different items. So I think refining that waiver request to specify what is actually needed to be waived would be helpful. And I guess in a nutshell, the way the waivers are currently framed, in essence, it would result in a waiver of the bylaw. So although the applicant has not requested a wholesale waiver of the local bylaw, with the waivers of the certain sections that they have requested, it seems that that would essentially be the outcome. So I think refining those waivers would be helpful for the review. We were looking for some limit of work clarification, particularly relating to the second wastewater treatment facility, Leaching Field. So some information about the treatment facility itself and its sizing, but then that second leaching field that's across the wetland system that would require a wetland crossing doesn't seem to be included in the limit of work. There isn't a tree line shown for it, so it's a little bit unclear what the intent of that is. We're looking for some additional information regarding the directional drilling to access that area, wanting some evaluation of potential changes to wetland resource area, including bernal pool hydrology from the project. There are, as I'm sure the board is aware, critical areas on and proximate to the site, which include notably the bernal pools, as well as Sawmill Brook, which is a cold water trout fishery. And so we've suggested that an assessment of the project with regard to potential impacts to those specific critical areas be provided to facilitate evaluation. There were a couple notes we had on wetland resource areas in terms of an area that is not isolated vegetated wetland, but could be isolated land subject to flooding. So some analysis to evaluate that, to show an intermittent stream flowing out of one of the wetlands. And then also an assessment of whether a flood study is warranted. So FEMA maps the site as a Zone A, 100-year floodplain with elevation undetermined. The FEMA mapping, not surprisingly, as it often does, jumps elevations, and we're just looking for the applicant to provide some assessment of, you know, why a flood study is or isn't necessary to determine the elevation. Sometimes, you know, it's clear enough that the floodplain is not near a project site, and so even though you don't know the elevation, you can be confident that the work isn't within the 100-year floodplain. Sometimes a flood study is needed to establish that elevation because it's just too close to call. So we're looking for some additional input on that. And that is the kind of broad overview of our main items for the environmental side.
Thank you. Shall we move to the overview of the engineering?
Sure. So again, for the record, Matt Cody with Beals and Thomas. From the environmental side, I mean, excuse me, from the engineering side, we noted, we reviewed the waivers. None of them in particular are concerning from that standpoint. And the requesting, you know, some dimensional relief from setbacks, some parking space sizes, the number of parking space, some administrative, you know, waivers from, you know, from site plan review and different things that are obviously being handled by you under the comprehensive permit. And so again, we didn't have any, you know, concerns on what the waivers being requested. And they're all pretty standard for a 40B project, and again, none of them are, you know, concerning in any way. We did have some questions about the water system and the extent to which it needs to be extended from the other side of 128. I'm sure you're creating kind of a long dead end. And there's a lot of elevation grade change there, which obviously affects the pressure. So we're looking for some information on that of the applicant. So we are, we are, we're in receipt of the applicant's kind of intermediate response to some of these early questions. They said these, you know, that the fact that the water system is a little vague at this point will be addressed in an upcoming iteration of the plans. So we look forward to seeing that. Snow storage was a concern, and they seem to be storing snow on steep slopes in areas that are away from the road. So it's unclear how they'll get the snow there. And they're, you know, they're introducing, you know, quite a bit of impervious on this long road. And it's just unclear, you know, we're requesting clarification on where that snow will be stored. Other kind of minor details are like, you know, trash removal. They do note that this seems to be like a trash room in the center, you know, kind of interim for the building and within that garage area. So it's unclear like how that will be serviced, you know, if a larger truck is to be able to access the garage, or dumpster is going to be rolled outside. And there are dumpsters, there was a detail for an external dumpster pad, but then one was not shown on the site plan. So that was, so that was a concern. And then getting to stormwater management, understanding these are permit plans, not necessarily construction drawing. There are several inconsistencies that we're seeing in the stormwater design, but they don't, not necessarily things that can't be addressed or corrected at some point. Their test just information is being requested, especially in the areas of these infiltration systems. And again, the applicant has indicated that this information will be forthcoming, so we look forward to seeing that. We want to see determinations of the estimated seasonal high groundwater elevation. That's critical to, you know, documenting, you know, performance of the intended performance of these systems. You know, you need to show that separation of the groundwater on various calculations. We also noted, in kind of a parallel comment to the environmental review, that there are the bernal pools on site, and those require, you know, special consideration when considering the stormwater system. And we're not seeing that at this point. Again, the applicant has indicated that information will be forthcoming in the next iteration. Regarding the landscape design, our landscape architect noted that that design seems adequate and robust. There just seems to be, again, being permitting plans and not necessarily construction documents. There are some inconsistencies between the plant lists and like, and what is shown on the actual plan. And then from a geotechnical standpoint, kind of mirroring the stormwater, there are concerns about, kind of like a lack of test information or deep borings of that nature that would be, you know, required for building to the size on a site like this. I mean, not just ledge all over the site with lots of outcrops. So we'd want to just see a better characterization of the existing, you know, underburden. With that, so, and then another, so in their applicant's response to that, they indicated that, you know, it's kind of premature for that kind of geotechnical analysis, and that could be a condition of the permit. We can, you know, that's, I guess, obviously at the discretion of the board on how much they want to go. But again, it is, I guess, fairly typical for them to not have all that information upfront, you know, they're trying to get their permit first, and then they would progress to a construction set, but we just know that for the board. Another thing, again, considering the amount of earthwork and like potential blasting or rock removal, we requested that they provide some kind of information on a construction management plan, you know, trucking routes, those kinds of things, how that'll impact, you know, the surroundings. Again, the applicant indicated that's kind of premature for that kind of analysis. It's some typically something that would be dictated by the contractor they have on board, which they don't yet. So that is understood. So again, that's something that's maybe conditional approval of the board, that, you know, that construction management plan, you know, is kind of rolled into the building permit process, assuming the project moves forward, and it would be reviewed at that time. But that's a kind of a, you know, brief overview of the civil items that we identified.
Wouldn't the results of the deep borings speak to what size building you could erect on the site?
Correct.
So it would be hard for us to issue a permit without having greater clarity on the potential footprint of a building that could be constructed?
Yes, and that was, so, so like I said, the specific field and Thomas didn't specifically review the geotechnical aspects. We hired Northeast Geotechnical as a subconsultant, and that, and their letter was, you know, attached to ours, but they did echo that concern. They, you know, it seems like there's not, there's not a lot of analysis supporting, you know, a building of the size or development of the size, considering the, you know, existing topography and ledge out crops and what's going on on the existing site. They would like to see more.
Okay.
As far as establishing kind of, yeah, like, you know, baseline condition or, you know, your rock elevations, what have you.
Are there general questions from the board? Please raise your hand. Let's see, okay.
I have joined, Sarah, just so you know.
Oh, good, thank you.
All set.
I have 89 little pictures to go through.
Pictures are hard this time of night.
Jim Dietrich. You need to unmute yourself, Jim.
Thank you. I did. I'm Matt. Thank you for a fairly comprehensive report. I appreciate that. My question is, most of us on the board are not deeply familiar with all these issues of construction, et cetera. And so we're learning. But my concern is, this project has been in the works for, it appears, now, almost two years. And so much of this information that we've requested, we keep hearing from the applicant that it will be forthcoming, and that, you know, we can make a condition of this or that or the other thing. It seems like we're being asked to make a decision based on incomplete information. And in some cases, we don't even know exactly what questions to ask because the information has been so incomplete. And I'm surprised that a developer would engage in a project like this without doing their homework a little better. This is really surprising to me. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I'm getting a little concerned about it. And would like to hear some of your comments of what have you faced in the past dealing with 40B projects? Is this typical?
Unfortunately, it is. Because again, I mean, a project of this size, you know, is lots of design fees, there's lots that, you know, the cost of doing the borings and the cost of acquiring all this information can be substantial. And to the extent that they can, you know, the applicant is trying to, you know, have some reassurance or some, you know, you know, a better feeling that they're actually going to have, you know, that the project is viable and they're going to have, and they're going to be able to permit it before they expend, you know, those dollars on like, on kind of the, or more of the details. So this is something we typically see. There's that balance, you know, it's giving us enough information that we're comfortable, but also understanding that these are not construction documents. You know, the documents that we've reviewed would not be issued for construction. There would be, you know, modifications and extra detail added, and as borings were done, that information would be incorporated. So it is something that we see that, you know, the board would have to condition if you're not comfortable with what, you know, that before, you know, you can go to the next step, we want X, Y, and Z. And then once we get X, Y, and Z, you know, there's a review of that, and then, you know, it's typical of how these go. If that answers your question.
You need to unmute yourself.
I should first say that I am the town moderator in Manchester, and I am speaking this evening, not in my official capacity, but simply as a citizen. I think it is imperative that the town have complete information about the environmental impact of this project before the ZBA goes forward with issuing permits. We cannot rely on incomplete information to make a decision about a project that is so important to the town.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Sarah, I'll speak. You know, something that I had latched on to from the very beginning, from our very first meeting, was the fact that, you know, we didn't have a geotech report, you know, from the onset. I just think that something like that is so important in, you know, analyzing the existing conditions, determining what you can and cannot build, where you can build it, the classification of the soils, the ledge. And, you know, from reading these reports, you know, that was something that has been requested, you know, from, from Beals and Thomas and Northeast Geotech. I think this site is so challenging that I'm, I too am surprised that something like this wasn't, you know, completed from the onset. So, I mean, Mr. Cody, I don't know what you think about that, but, you know, my experience, I mean, that's one of the first things that I see, you know, working in real estate as well. So thanks for your time.
Yeah, no, I mean, we echo, we kind of echo those concerns. Northeast Geotech certainly did. And relative to the stormwater design, yeah, we'd like to see more as far regarding test pits and, you know, groundwater elevations and, yeah, just, you know, kind of what's happening underneath before, you know, we'd have a little bit of comfort. You know, it's great to show these infiltration basins and all the, you know, kind of all the bells and whistles, but are they going to work? You know, and that's kind of, and that's the information that we're lacking as far as being able to confirm, well, not confirm, but, you know, I mean, it's all models, it's, you know, it's estimations, it's... So we want to make sure that the models are representing, you know, existing onsite conditions, and right now, we just don't have that information.
Thank you. Catherine?
Hi, Sarah. My only comment is that Beals and Thomas appear to have done a really great job with their peer review, and they have requested a number of clarifications and items more than I care to list here verbally, but I would, my recommendation would be that they, that we adopt all of their recommended requests for clarification and further data as our own and move forward with those, because I think they've asked for some really important things in their reports.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Jim said. I know what I don't know, and I don't even know what kind of question to ask at this point. And I'm concerned about trying to extrapolate information based on incomplete information we have here. So as Catherine said, I think we're, he's asking us to a lot of faith in a very short period of time, and I don't have either the faith or the time. We don't have the time. So I'd like to see more.
And I'll just say, Sarah, that, you know, we can sit here and argue about the right number of parking spaces and the project's impact on traffic, and whether one driveway is appropriate or two driveways are appropriate, you know, we can argue that to death, but when we start talking about the environmental impacts and the impacts on, you know, the wetlands and, you know, blasting and, you know, these things that we're talking about today, these are things that we can really, you know, we can quantify and measure with the right analysis and the right, you know, documentation. And so this is where I think the project really starts to get real, and you can really sort of measure the impacts. Thanks.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes, Jim?
I'd like to kind of build on what John just very carefully pointed out. We spent a lot of time talking about driveways and traffic and all this and that. The real serious issues here are, we're putting in a building that will have 136 apartments that is going to depend on a sewage treatment plant on site, location not totally determined, leach field not totally determined. We're going to blow off the top of this hill. Where are we going to put all the stone and the rock and the dirt? Oh, that's not been determined. How are you going to get it away? Oh, that's not been determined. This is totally inadequate. No one would enter into a project like that. If they haven't done their homework, then shame on them, because they're either going to lose a lot of money and we're going to be left with a hole in the ground, or we're going to end up with an environmental disaster on our hands, because there are bernal ponds, there's sensitive waterways, and none of this has been determined. It's all well, we'll get back to you when the appropriate time comes. I'm sorry, I just have trouble accepting that.
Thank you. Mr. Engler, did you have something brief you wanted to say?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can either speak now or wait till everybody's done. I just wanted to respond to a couple things, but I'm happy to wait up, heard of the board's judgment.
Okay, I think next we're going to go through the particulars of these reports. If you had something on the overview?
Yeah, I mean, maybe I can save the board some time on going through the particulars of the reports. First of all, I'd like to thank Andrew and Matt and Stacy for their reports. Beals and Thomas is a high-quality professional outfit, and I think their peer reviews were thorough and comprehensive. I don't think that's in dispute. Obviously, we just got the environmental peer review on Monday. I think the civil came in late last week. We're giving it all our attention. We will be responding to every item in both letters in written form, and we're going through a fairly extensive update on our plan set to reflect a lot of the things that have been requested. That's the natural progression of a public hearing process and peer review. We submit our schematic plan set, peer reviewers go through it, just like we did on traffic. We'll respond with as many things as we can. We'll answer all the questions to the best of our ability. And then Beals and Thomas will have another opportunity to review it, to see, you know, what we've added and what we've changed and what additional information we've provided. Respectfully, I think the board may be a little bit confused relative to the difference between incomplete information and schematic information. Under 40B, we're required to submit all schematic plans. These are not construction drawings. That's just the law. Don't shoot the messenger. So yes, we don't have all the answers to all the questions, nor will we during the permitting process, but we're very comfortable with the board conditioning a lot of those construction details as a prerequisite to getting a building permit. We're quite comfortable relative to what we know at this very moment. We can build the building that we've proposed. We wouldn't be proposing it if we didn't believe that. So yes, will some additional borings or soil testings be illustrative to our ultimate construction? Of course it will, but that's going to influence the type of foundation or other things. It's not going to influence whether we can build the building or if we can't. I mean, I have a pretty experienced team behind me that has been through many difficult sites and many projects, and we're quite confident that we can build the project as we, as we've designed it. We will provide additional information. We're not going to provide a full geotechnical analysis as part of the comprehensive permit process. That's never provided. Moreover, to think that we could have a, if I showed these plans to any good general contractor capable of building this project, they would laugh at us with the level of detail relative to providing a full construction management plan or providing a lot of the other details that, that the board has asked for. As part of the permit process, we'll take a 30-page permit set and turn it into a 300-page construction drawing set. And from that, that's where we get bids from general contractors and can provide a lot of the detail that the board is requesting. And moreover, we can't move forward with the project without a building permit, and all of that will be required as such. So with that said, a lot of what Beals and Thomas has requested, we will be providing, and they'll see that in the next iteration, but there are going to be details that are never provided customarily as part of a 40B process during the permitting stages. So I just want to communicate and manage everybody's expectations.
Thank you, Mr. Engler.
If you want to characterize it as incomplete information, go right ahead, but that's not information that we need to produce at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Engler, it's my understanding this zoning board of appeals has the right to request information that it needs to make a determination with respect to each waiver that has been requested. If we don't receive the information we need, we can't act on granting that waiver. So we're trying to get sufficient information to be able to do our job. We're not willing to condition everything. We're not going to, you know, sign off on a paper sack and it says, "Trust me," and then wait for the building permit to be issued. We need more underlying data. And so we're going to rely on Beals and Thomas to...
Madam Chair, I understand that, and I think ultimately we'll be able to get Beals and Thomas, both on the civil side and the environmental side, more or less comfortable with the plans as proposed. But there's additional information. I mean, respectfully, the board can ask for whatever it wants, but that doesn't mean within the context of the 40B regulations and law that... But that doesn't mean within the context of the 40B regulations and law that we have to provide it. I mean, that's just the law. I mean, we, we've already gone above and beyond and will continue to go above and beyond to try to get your peer review consultants satisfied. I think we're there with environmental partners on traffic and parking. And I'm confident we can get there with Beals and Thomas on these other disciplines. So, um, we, we have the benefit of their full reports. I can assure you, my team has already started working on this even before we got the reports and we got the original, um, I think it was from Matt perhaps with the additional, that it was like a memo or something with some comments. So as soon as we got that, we, we've gone to work even before that. And I think the plan set that we'll be resubmitting will reflect a lot of the information. We're making some fairly significant changes that are going to reduce the environmental impacts. And, you know, we'll provide narratives. So we're doing all that, but just because the board asks for, you know, whatever it might be, you know, why wouldn't every board under every 40B project ask for every piece of information? That doesn't mean it needs to be provided. The law is pretty clear about what we need to provide.
Thank you. We don't need you to tell us what the law is. I'm sorry.
Can I just ask, is there something that we've asked for that's above and beyond what's been asked for by Beals and Thomas or any other third-party consultant? Because I think we've been very fair and I think we've taken our consultants' lead in all this.
Yeah, I would characterize most of what Beals and Thomas has asked for as, it's fair. And, you know, we'll be providing most of it, but we're not providing a full geotechnical analysis. It's just not done during the permitting stages. I know Beals and Thomas has been involved on the developer's side on some tough sites, and they do some preliminary, or I say, the developer frequently does some preliminary work and conditions, being able to move forward with doing all the required geotechnical analysis. And oh, by the way, Beals and Thomas can continue to represent the board post-permitting and review all our analysis. So, and we have no concern about that. But some of the, some of the information that's been requested now is a, a little extensive. A full construction management plan for permitting, that's, that's not going to be provided. So are we comfortable providing that as a condition to receiving a building permit? That we have to submit a draft to the building department that they get to scrutinize? And, you know, yeah, that's, that's customary. So, um, you know, and I think Beals and Thomas would agree with that. Once again, general contractors are not going to roll up their sleeves and look at a site without construction drawings. And nobody does construction drawings until you have a permit or you do or otherwise. That's just the way development works.
But, but nobody's asked for a full construction, construction set of plans and specs here.
I'm aware of that.
Well, then why do you keep talking about it?
Okay, okay, let's not do this back and forth. Thank you very much, people.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Deeter.
I'm concerned how many projects Mr. Engler has undertaken that are on as challenging a site as this one. We've heard about his vast experience, but how many have actually been on such a challenging site that we're dealing with? Both environmentally and structurally, rock removal, blasting, uh, I have some concerns about that. I did a little digging and I couldn't find anything about it online, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist.
But I, I, I'm not sure that's germane to the situation. I think what our responsibility is, is to ask the questions we need to ask, get the information we feel we need in order to make the right decision, issue conditions, and waive or not waive various conditions in our bylaws. And I think that's our job. So I don't want to go with this back and forth. Right? Thank you. Um, Catherine, you have your hand raised. Is that an old hand raise or a new?
Well, at one point I had another comment to make, but now I think it's probably no longer germane to the conversation. So I'm just gonna, just move on.
Okay, thank you. Um, Karen Bennett, did you have a comment you wish to make?
Yes, Karen Bennett, 28, Lincoln Street. Um, I just, I, I support everything that Jim is saying. And I just want to remind the board here, for those that do or do not know, my house abuts the high school. And when the high school project was done and the ledge was done, there was major damage done to a lot of the houses in this area. So my question is, have we done a study on what the impact of that drilling is going to be to any surrounding areas? How deep and how wide will it be? Because just to inform you all, they didn't have a structural engineer check the houses beforehand and the town ended up paying for all the damages to those rooms.
Thank you. Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Dan Hill. I'm an attorney representing the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. Um, I just had a few specific comments in response to some of the things that were said in the last, uh, 38 minutes. And I have some other general comments which I can save for later. I, I'm, I'm absolutely troubled by the suggestion that the board could defer judgment in decision-making on issues of substance, uh, that relate to this project for two reasons. First of all, the applicant is requesting significant waivers from town bylaws. They are asking for a blanket waiver from the wetland bylaw, a blanket waiver from the stormwater bylaw. And they need specific waivers from the ground, surface and groundwater resource protection bylaw. Um, and they're asked, they need a waiver from the 500-foot dead-end length cap. In order for the board to make an educated decision on these waiver requests, the board needs data. It needs evidence. And the evidence, i- if evidence is not provided by the applicant, the board is disabled from making an educated decision. That's number one. Uh, number two, the suggestion that any zoning board may, under chapter 40B, defer judgment on substantive issues until after the permit's finished.
Kind of, yeah, yeah, it's, I don't know how much more is, but yeah.
Sorry, I just muted that person.
Thank you. Um, the, the suggestion that any zoning board under chapter 40B can defer a decision until after the comprehensive permit is issued is simply incorrect as a matter of law. Mr. Engler, I'm sure knows this. His attorney certainly knows it. Perhaps Beals and Thomas doesn't know it, but it's, it's not permitted, period. Um, this, this case law ad nauseam on this issue from the Housing Appeals Committee that have, that have overturned conditions that are imposed on comprehensive permits. Uh, all you have to do is go into the Housing Appeals Committee website, look at the decisions that were released in March of 2021. There were probably five or six of them released at the same time. Almost every single decision struck conditions that did exactly what's being proposed here tonight, that you defer a judgment on specific issues, including specifically a construction management plan until after, uh, the decision's rendered. Other conditions that have been stricken by the Housing Appeals Committee...
That's, that's, that's okay. We don't need to go through all of those aspects of it. We're asking for information to be able to make a decision. I don't think we're going to defer those types of things.
Okay, I just want to support that argument. Thank you.
Sarah, Sarah, I'm sorry. Can I just weigh in for a moment?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, this is George Pucci from Town Council's office. Um, not, not to specifically echo what Attorney Hill said, but, and not to get into case law from HAC or argue the law one way or the other. You know, it's very clear, you need sufficient information to be able to act on this permit application. And that includes anything in, in terms of either approving or denying the project totally or approving it with conditions and denying or at least acting on waiver requests. So you have a number of issues that are outstanding. Beals and Thomas has identified them. And that includes the, the underlying subcontracted geotechnical comments that the consultant, the peer reviewer referred to earlier. That report is in the record. Um, I anticipate, Madam Chair, you're going to provide the applicant an opportunity to respond to all of the items that have been identified that need to be produced. Uh, the, the applicant, there's no point in arguing the law one way or the other. The applicant is either going to comply with, uh, producing the information that has been identified to you as necessary, uh, both by the peer reviewers, the other, uh, local boards, such as the Conservation Commission and your own members, or the applicant is not. And then later on, when you've gathered as much information as you possibly can, you're going to have to determine, you know, whether and to what extent you have sufficient information to act on each of the waiver requests and also to act on the, the project overall. I am concerned, as a couple of the members have noted, about, um, lack of information so far and how much time has been, uh, really kind of wasted so far as well. We understand, you know, certain, uh, information under 40B can be provided in a sort of preliminary format. Uh, you know, you don't need the full construction drawings, that, that type of thing. But you need sufficient information and to a reasonable degree of, um, of detail so that you can make a meaningful decision on the request. So, and one of your members, a studently, pointed out, you know, this is a particular site. So, you know, law and what the Housing Appeals Committee may or may not do to, uh, to a decision under this project is really irrelevant. You need to look at this particular project, this particular site, listen to the input that you're getting from the peer reviewers and your other local boards and, and officials, and request the information that you need particular to this site. So if that includes geotechnical information that you don't have, if it includes information as to blasting, uh, anything going under subsurface and all these environmental issues, the applicant is going to have to make that determination whether to provide that information to you or not. Uh, and then you will, uh, make the decision once all that information is, uh, compiled and, and presented. One last thing I want to note, and I don't want to get into a back and forth with the applicant. And Madam Chair, you're running the meeting very well, but you're directing all the comments or answers to questions through you. So I'm not looking for a back and forth in this, but there, there has not been, um, forthcoming information on certain very important aspects of this. While we were waiting on, uh, between public hearing sessions, the Conservation Commission had issued a directive about the need for wildlife habitat study. And that was supposed to have been commenced by March 1. That was requested of the applicant. It was refused. Then I, I went upon this fool's errand of spending vacation week during February, going back and forth with the attorney about a nonsensical, um, exchange about, you know, whether the applicant was going to agree to this wildlife habitat study or not. And I got all kinds of semantics and shifting views and positions as to why they weren't going to allow that to happen. And the town even offered to fund this wildlife study itself. We offered to provide the consultant, fund it, provide a, uh, scope of work that they would be doing non-invasive work onsite to conduct this study. And it was refused. So I'm, I'm just noting, as we're going along in this record, there is information that is, that the board is being deprived of. Now, I'm, I'm informed that there, there still could be, um, benefit, uh, to the wildlife habitat study that was supposed to have commenced by March 1. If the applicant wants to agree to it and we can undertake it now, you know, in the immediate future so that that work gets underway. And this is seasonal work. So if it's not done, you know, during thi- this time of the season with, in terms of breeding and that type of, of thing, then it's forever lost for the year. And then you're going to have to decide later on the Conservation Commission's recommendations how that affects your ability to act on the waiver requests, particularly with regard to things like buffer zones to, uh, vernal pools. So I'm just going to note my concern at this point in the process. You're getting very late, um, along in the public hearing. Uh, you've got a May deadline. We requested before kind of a, you know, a new extended deadline because it's obvious that it's not going to be realistic to conduct meaningful, uh, further hearing sessions to get and discuss and vet all the information that you need on this. So I'd reiterate again tonight, I would, I would ask, uh, you, Madam Chair, to try to get another, try to get an extension of the public hearing, um, deadline so that the board has some type of propose that it's going to have enough time to gather all this information and then be able to fully discuss it, both with local boards and committees in the public hearing, with peer reviewers, with third parties, uh, the public, we're giving input, and with the applicant, while that public hearing session, sessions are still ongoing so that you have the ability to conduct a meaningful analysis and ultimate decision-making on this, on this project. So we're, we're now reaching a critical, uh, point, you know, in this process. And, and if it ends up that you have to deny this project for inadequate information on various issues, that may end up, uh, where you're at. Um, it's never good for anybody if that is where you end up. But, you know, I would urge that we pick a realistic deadline for the, you know, extended deadline for the close of the public hearing. And we start to meaningfully, you know, go through the information that you need so that you can have further substantive hearings on, on these issues. And I'm anticipating the applicant will respond to the issues noted by Beals and Thomas. But we are now at the point that you really need meaningful responses. You're not going to grant, at least on my recommendation, you're not going to grant blanket waivers without specifics as to what is actually being requested, what is required and why. So I, you know, I just want to, you know, kind of
Thank you.
reset the clock sort of of where you're at, um, at this point.
Thank you. Um, do I have a consensus of the board that we would like Mr. Engler to provide all of the information requested by Beals and Thomas and respond to all of their questions in detail?
Yes. You have support. Yes.
Yes.
This is Catherine with a yes.
Okay. John?
Yeah.
John?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, then I would ask, Mr. Engler, how long will it take you in elapsed time to provide the information requested by Beals and Thomas and written responses each item?
Um, I, I think it's going to take, well, it's going to take, uh, let, let, I mean, you guys asked a lot of questions. For one, um, the environmental, additional environmental information that were, that has been requested, we're working on, we are in fact doing additional vernal pool surveys. We are doing wildlife quarter studies. So that work that was requested, yes, we, we're not letting the town undertake that. I mean, listen, guys, let's be realistic and honest, all right? I, I, I don't care if people, you know, but why would I allow somebody to undertake this, uh, uh, study that's sworn to do everything in their possible power to stop the project? It makes no sense. People put my position, wouldn't do likewise. We're going to do an objective study. Beals and Thomas and other, others can look at it. So we aren't, we have already undertaken that. We, we understand that it's important to the town and we are doing that. So to answer your question, Madam Chair, we think we can have a full plan set back to the town, hopefully within two weeks from tonight, as well as a written narrative, um, to the questions. My, uh, wetland scientist, Scott Goddard from Goddard Consulting is with us tonight. I'm going to, if it pleases the board, he's going to chime in, but we're going to provide written narratives, and additional, uh, specificity to the waiver list. Specifically, I think, I don't speak for Mr. Cody, obviously, but he did not seem particularly troubled by the engineering and dimensional-related waivers. I think the board's focus is more on, uh, the environmental-related waivers. And the reason we have not submitted an updated list, which I've been saying for two months, is because the plans are... And the reason we have not submitted an updated list, which I've been saying for two months, is because the plans are still changing. Thus, the waiver list is still changing. So we will have that um, updated plan set, I would hope, two weeks from tonight. And uh, as well as responses to the written narratives. Are we gonna have it, the, the wetlands, the additional environmental study will not be done in two weeks. It takes longer than that, and I'll let Scott speak to that. Um, but hopefully that, that answers some of the questions. So Scott, if you wanna jump on and talk a little bit about what you're doing.
Yeah, just very briefly, I can address that. Thank you, Jeff. If I could take a minute of the time from the board, if that's okay?
Yes.
So this is Scott Goddard. I'm the owner of Goddard Consulting and I'm the wetlands consultant for the applicant in this case. Uh, myself and my team are made up of wildlife and wetland experts. And our goal here is to make sure that this project is compliant with the Mass Wetland Protection Act. And to the extent that is reasonable and applicable, the local wetlands bylaw will be involved with the process and with the Conservation Commission for the order of conditions. And um, insofar as it's applicable to the environmental review, Beals and Thomas and the, and the board through this ZBA process. So beyond the oh, determination of the wetland in that process, we've also identified the locations of the vernal pools. I know that's a, a, a popular, you know, topic here, so we, those have been identified. They will be on revised plan sets that's, that this board and Beals and Thomas will see. We're further undertaking a study that I have scoped out as the appropriate sort of um, let's say, um, umbrella of information to collect, to make appropriate uh, applications to this project. And what I mean by that is we're looking at each of these pools, the kind of species that are using them, the upland areas that are sensitive and, and important to their, to their breeding and overwintering uh, and movement patterns. The kind of information that was requested uh, in large part by the, the the emails that went around looking for a, a study. So the particular, you know, exact wording of the study that was requested by the town, you know, we're, we're doing a, a, a version of that, that I think is the substance of what's uh, important here. And I believe that this board, your peer reviewers and the Conservation Commission will be pleased and satisfied with the thoroughness of the, of the study that, that we do with our, our team of experts. So we're looking forward to, to giving you the information that you guys need to make a decision, giving your peer reviewers the uh, information it needs to make good decisions on this project. And so that's on, that's underway. We're doing that and we're actively doing that now. And then secondly, with respect to the, all the, and the environmental comments that were brought up earlier and the Beals and Thomas letter that came out two days ago, I'm in possession of that. I reviewed it, I've started working through it and we are preparing point by point um, responses so that you all have good information. So this is just to let you know there's good information being collected and I'm confident that, that the, the board will, will appreciate having that information to make its decisions.
Mr. Cody, based on the information from the applicant and that sounds like some of the information will be provided by March twenty-third, how much more elapsed time do you need to respond to the information you receive from the applicant?
We typically would request approximately two weeks as well on, based on workload with other projects. I mean, to, a lot of times we could turn things around faster, but just as like an estimate, we would say two weeks as well.
So that would mean that the earliest you would have any type of response would be by April sixth. So in all reality, we couldn't even have a meeting until April thirteenth to review that information. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And it's my understanding that some of the environmental studies will not be ready by March twenty-third, so presumably that would extend it out longer.
Correct.
And Sarah?
Yes, Ms. Pucci.
Um. It, you know, if for no other reason than a courtesy, it would be nice to get a confirmation from either Mr. Goddard or the applicant in response to the specifically requested Wildlife Habitat Study. That, that's encouraging to hear that they intend, they're, they're undertaking some type of study. That was not unfortunately what was conveyed to me in that fool's errand that I discussed on February vacation week.
Yeah, I planned, I planned to go through all of the outstanding items.
Well, well, this, I, I need to note this issue specifically because this is time sensitive. What, what we, we proposed an alternative of the town paying for it and undertaking the study itself, providing information regarding the consultant beforehand, only as an alternative because the applicant did not appear to be willing to conduct that Wildlife Habitat Study. So it would be nice to get, in addition to the other issues, this is a separate issue. It would be nice to get confirmation, you know, after this session is over of the, the applicant's compliance with that directive from the Conservation Commission about the Wildlife Habitat Study. That, that would go a long way on that issue. We could get it from Mr. Goddard just to confirm what he is doing in response to that request. And that's important to know now because of the timeliness of uh, that, that requested study. So I, I just wanted to note that side issue uh, since there were, there were extensive communications on this outside of the public hearing process. So that, that would be something I, I would request, you know, uh, separate from, from the um, all the items that have been requested from uh, Beals and Thomas.
Thank you. I've got a long list of things that have been requested from the applicant that we're gonna go through and soon we're gonna receive them. Um. Given the fact that we will not be able to complete environmental and engineering by April thirteenth, since not all the environmental studies will be done, but hopefully we can make some progress. Um. It seems to me that the board's been working in good faith. Um, it's clear to me that we can't complete the public hearing by May twenty-fourth with all the information we need. So we need an extension. Um, and we need to establish a date tonight because if we don't receive an extension, then we need to change the scope of our future meetings in order to be able to close the public hearing on May twenty-fourth and then make our decision and issue discuss conditions after we've closed the public hearing without any input from the applicant, just because we won't have sufficient information. Um, so I am asking for an extension until September eighth, twenty-twenty-two. And I go to September eighth because summer gets hectic and a lot of time is lost. And I have to have all board members at every meeting. Do you have a response to that, Mr. Angler?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. My response is similar to the hearing before. Uh, I can grant an extension at any time during the public hearing process. And at this point in time, um, I'm not prepared to give an extension. Uh, the characterization that I've been dragging my feet is inaccurate. Moreover, let's not forget, which is highly unusual, the board did not retain Beals and Thomas until three months into the public hearing process. Usually peer review consultants are retained within the first two weeks. So I, I will continue to work in good faith. My full team, this has their undivided attention, will be submitting significant information over the next two to four weeks. And, and let's see where the process plays out. I, I find it interesting that the board is asking for an extension where, for instance, at the last public hearing, we had the fire chief provide unequivocal testimony that he is comfortable with the plan. Yet many members of the board said, I think this project's unsafe. I need a second means of ingress. Why would I give an extension when that condition alone will force me to appeal because I can't meet that? So-
That's fine, Mr. Angler. You've explained that to us before.
Right.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna go through that again. The fact of the matter is, we feel we need an extension. If you're not gonna give us an extension tonight, then we will proceed on the basis that we need to close this public hearing by May twenty-fourth. If we don't have all the information we need to have favorable determinations on waiver requests, we will deny waiver requests.
Fine, fine. Madam Chair, as a compromise, I will give you a thirty-day extension tonight. There's no way I'm giving until September. And I'm coming to the conclusion, no matter what I provide or my team provides, it's not gonna matter. I certainly with the Conservation Commission, there's nothing we're gonna do that's gonna satisfy them. And, and uh, it's just fine, let's extend it thirty days, alright? I, I'm, I know I'm gonna be able to satisfy environmental partners and I think to a lesser extent Beals and Thomas. And the fire chief's testimony was clear, but I, I, my sense is because of the political winds in the town and what's going on, that the, the per- whatever, thirty days, extend, May twenty-third to June twenty-third. There you have it.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Talman?
Thank, thank you. I just wanted to respond briefly to Mr. Pucci and I, I don't intend to get in a debate. I think it may be misconstrued what we left him with. Wha- what I suggested to him is that in this process, we don't take directives from the Conservation Commission. We respond to requests from the zoning board of appeals. So we weren't going to provide a report that wasn't requested by the zoning board of appeals, but more than that, as Mr. Goddard and Mr. Angler said, we are providing a report. We're going to be suggesting in a very detailed manner that we be granted waivers with respect to vernal pools. But, and to satisfy that, going back to Mr. Hill's point and Mr. Pucci's point, we're gonna justify those waivers and, and why we can still protect the wetlands here. And that's forthcoming. It's in process now. We didn't have to begin that study uh, before being directed by the board, but we felt it was important to get ahead of that because we know how important an, an issue it is. We absolutely will require those waivers, but we are also going to demonstrate, as I said to Attorney Pucci, that we are doing no harm to the vernal pool habitat there. And, and furthermore, that very same issue is going to be vetted at length by the Conservation Commission under the Wetland Protection Act. And that was all explained. I, do I regret that Mr. Pucci and I had a heated exchange uh, in between sessions? Sure I do, but I don't think we're really that far apart on this issue. We're going to satisfy the board's concerns with respect to the impact that we may have or lack thereof with respect to this important resource area. So uh, thank you for allowing me to mention that.
Thank you.
Uh, Sarah?
Yes.
I'm not gonna belabor the point because you don't wanna hear it, but-
I don't want any more discussion on this. I'm sorry.
Well, we, we can't leave the record that they, they satisfied our concerns. It wasn't a directive from the board. It was very clear from the commission. It was very clear that it had to commence before March one. I got nothing but the runaround on it. They never confirmed that they were gonna do any study whatsoever. It was, it was Mr. Goddard tonight saying it for the first time, and I don't appreciate misrepresenting what the record was on those numerous exchanges that cost the town a fortune to have me spend essentially the entire week going back and forth on that issue. So let's just be clear about it and let's make sure that Mr. Goddard and/or the applicant provide confirmation after this hearing session is over about what the Wildlife Habitat Study it is that they've commenced and what the scope of that is going to be, along with the other issues. Thank you.
And Sarah?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Who wants to be recognized? Raise your hand.
Catherine Howe. I believe my hand is raised. I'm sorry if it's not. A member of the board. I would like to agree with what Town Council has just said and just reiterate that we have a right to be clear on what has been done, what has not been done and what is committed to being done. And um, I don't appreciate the runaround either from my perspective. So um, I'd like to take everyone at their word and at good faith, but I feel that there's a lot of misrepresentation happening here. So um, I agree with Mr. Pucci here. I'm gonna take his advice and I think we need to be very clear about what is happening and what is not happening um, with regards to both what we, what we request and what the applicant agrees to provide us. Let's just be really clear about that right now with a timeline on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm not gonna move on to, I'm, we're done with this segment. I'm gonna move on to the agenda. Um, the next item is to review the status of the ADA compliant sidewalk design. Um, on February ninth, the applicant told us they could get us that by March ninth. Tonight is March ninth and we do not have anything. Mr. Angler, do you have a response to that?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, our team has, has worked on that extensively. Um, the good news is we will have an exhibit uh, by the next hearing. The other good news is contrary to what I said before, we actually at huge expense can fit an ADA sidewalk internal to our site from our project entrance to, to school street. Um, but our position remains the same. We would, we would uh, we would be comfortable with the condition requiring the sidewalk, but we'll only build the sidewalk if there's a sidewalk in school street on our side of the property to connect to. And that remains our position. So we will have an exhibit showing the schematic plan of an ADA sidewalk. Um, but we're quite certain we don't need to build that sidewalk if there's no sidewalk in school street. And based on our understanding of the school street conditions and how conservation is looking at this project relative to our proximity to vernal pools and resource areas, there's no way to build a sidewalk on that side of school street without significant impact to the same vernal pools and resource areas. So I'll be interested to see how the tan, town handles that. But that's a long-winded way of saying you'll have that exhibit and Beals and Thomas can review it.
And it's my understanding that the town would be permitted to extend its sidewalk on the east side of school street with a pedestrian, motion-activated pedestrian light to cross school from your development. And you would be required to put the sidewalk down to the street. I don't believe it has to be on your side of the street, so just make it clear what we're expecting. I'm now going to move to-
Can I ask one question? I'm sorry, that, uh, to, to, through the chair to, to um, Mr. Cody. Um, did he receive the, the memo we submitted last week that included all the test pits that we've, that we've done so far to date?
Yes, we did receive-
Okay, okay. I was just making sure. Thank you.
Yes. So you did, for the first item outstanding was the prior test pit data logs, which you did submit to us. Um, it was no da- notated by people that there were no, um, didn't appear to be any water level um, readings. Um. The next was a certification of the application made to the zoning board of appeals, which we received um, last week, or this week. Um, next item outstanding is the conservation waivers. We had asked for additional information regarding the necessity for requesting these waivers. Um, we requested that on, before February ninth and that's still outstanding. Do we have a date when that's gonna be provided?
Uh, I would hope we will provide that at the same time we provide the updated schematic plan to Beals and Thomas and the town.
So that's three twenty-three?
Yes. For some reason, we're not able to hit that date. I will let the board know as soon as possible, but that's my hope.
You gave us, provided us with a write-up regarding the driveway length. You did- You did not include any alternate designs that were considered.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was confused by that feedback from EP. It makes no sense. Of course, we considered every alternative, and they didn't work. But we went into great detail as to why the driveway we designed is what we did. So to say, you know, why, why didn't we, why didn't we include analysis on other options? They didn't work. So that, that, we're not going to do that. We provided a great, you know, a pretty extensive memo on all the various considerations that had to be taken into account when designing this. And I think deductive reasoning, one could make the determination that other options were not available because they were more impactful or, or, or couldn't provide the same consideration to topography, grading, distance to vernal pools, distance to resource areas, et cetera, et cetera. So, I, I think the memo we submitted stands on its own.
Okay, so no additional information. The next item was a driveway maintenance and operations plan, including a snow removal.
We'll be providing that when we provide the updated engineering.
Um, we get received more information on the total parking spaces with respect to the comparable properties. Um, guest parking, I don't believe we've received any response to our request for an explanation of the adequacy of the 16 guest spaces, the overflow plan, and evacuation plan for all vehicles on the property.
Yep. Um, I believe in the most recent Vanas and Associates memo, we did explain the guest parking and how we would be comfortable that if, for some reason, all the guest box exterior to the building were filled, that we would dedicate 10 additional spaces in the garage. I've never provided any evacuation plan for any 40B I've ever worked on. I've never had that request before. We, we don't have, there is no evacuation plan. And, and that's not required of, if I'm building a house in, in Marble, in Manchester by the sea, I don't, I don't need to provide an evacuation plan for my garage.
Too bad you were just building, too bad you're not building a house.
Uh, and what was the third item?
Overflow plan. If you have too many vehicles to fit in the garage.
That ties to the guest parking.
So your overflow, flow plan is 10 spaces in the garage?
For guests, yes.
Does that mean that 10 spaces are being taken away from residents?
Yeah. As I've said many times, this park, this project is overparked. We will have a surplus of parking spaces. I, I would be curious, you know, we've provided a lot of information on all sorts of other comparable projects and parking. I, I would be, through the Madam Chair respectfully, ask your peer review consultant to identify two projects that have been built in the last 15 years in the suburbs that have a higher parking ratio than what we've provided. I, I don't think you can.
Thank you.
We're, we, we've provided our justification both for guest parking and for resident parking. We feel quite comfortable. It's more than adequate.
Thank you. Uh, Catherine Howe, did you have something to add?
Sorry, I think my hand came earlier. No, I'm good.
Okay. Um, we had asked for a summer traffic analysis and, and an analysis of the commuter rail parking lot.
That was provided.
I don't believe so.
Um.
I haven't received it. I'll say that.
Yeah, there was a March 7th memo from Vanas and Associates. It was addressed in there. That was submitted to the town two days ago.
Oh, I haven't received that.
Madam Chair, can I, I have one question. Um, I was just asked by my civil engineer. As, as they are updating the plan set, and this, this could go for Goddard Consulting as well, they did not ask, is it appropriate, if they have just a clarification question, to ask Mr. Cody directly, or does everything have to go through the town planner?
What's your opinion, Mr. Cody?
Um, that's typically up to the town. We were, some communities have us speak directly, some communities don't. It's, it's really your preference.
Mr. Pucci, you have an opinion?
Um, as the consultant said, it can be done both ways. I, I think you're better off just conveying those questions through the town planner in this instance, to direct contact at this point.
Thank you. Um, and then we had questions that had come through the Conservation Commission, which you chose not to acknowledge, despite the fact that we're relying on the Conservation Commission to provide us with information. Are you working on any of those requests?
Madam Chair, yes. I mean, we talked about that several times during the public hearing. Two, I, I, listen, I'm not going to fight the board on how you want to characterize it. We have nothing pending before the Conservation Commission that there, I, I, I'm not even going to get into it. That's water under the bridge. We're working on it through the chair to, to Counselor Pucci. If we send an email that just specifies what the scope of the work we're doing, or what are you, what, you, you mentioned a couple of times that you want confirmation of this work. What, what are you looking for? Because I want to make sure that we provide to you or meet your expectations.
Well.
Sarah, tho, those issues are very clear. I, I've been talking about the Wildlife Habitat Study. I'm, I'm sure Mr. Goddard knows, and he can consult with, uh, the, the applicant about confirming what the scope is of that Wildlife Habitat Study that they've undertaken. Uh, the other issues, you reiterated them very clearly in your letter, Madam Chair, to the applicant that were conveyed from the Conservation Commission. So there's no lack of clarity at all. And they can simply respond to it. And, you know, whatever they want to provide, they can provide. Or say when they're going to provide it, or if they refuse to provide it, then they should specify that. But tho, those items are, are clearly listed in your, uh, letter that you, uh, reiterated over to the applicant, along with the other, but, you know, list of items that your, your member had kept track of at the last public hearing session.
Well, well, let me ask a different question then, because we do have that list. And I will say we are not going to respond to every item, or we're not going to provide every item on that list. But we are going to provide a lot of it, and we're going to provide what's necessary, um, you know, under the regulations. So, should we just submit the, the findings in the study when we're done? Is that, is that adequate?
No, I, I made a request with specific items on it. If you're not going to provide us with those items, I want you to tell us that. I don't want to have to read some study and try to figure out whether or not you've complied with our requests. You're asking too much of me, and in addition, we laid out exactly what we expected to happen in the Wildlife Habitat Study. And so we're asking, is Mr. Goddard doing that, or is he doing something else? And if so, what's he doing?
Okay, fair enough. So if I work off your February 18th letter to me, on the Conservation Commission request and Wildlife Habitat Study, we will respond to both of those.
Great. So, that covers the outstanding items. We came to a consensus tonight that we expected a response to every aspect of the Beals and Thomas reports, preliminary reports, would like written confirmation if you're not going to be responding to some of their requests. Um, I don't want to have to wait for two weeks and then try to figure out whether you've satisfied all the requests or not. We've done something different. Is that acceptable?
I'm, I'm sorry, I was, Madam Chair, I was reading your memo. You're asking how we're going to respond to the Beals and Thomas?
No, I'm, I'm saying the board tonight reached a consensus that they expect a response to every item requested by Beals and Thomas. And if you're not going to respond to some of them, we want to understand that. We want something in writing telling us, we're not going to respond to X, and this is Y.
Right, I, I can't answer that tonight. I can tell you this, it'll, our response, our response will be similar to the response to the environmental partners' traffic letter. They, they have a 15-page letter with items, and under each item, we will have a response. Whether or not we provide, you know, the full information on every item, I, I, once again, to manage your expectations, I don't think we will be providing every bit of information Beals and Thomas requested. In the case, if we're not providing something, it may be that we're providing it at a later time in the process, and we will identify that. But, not to parse words, but we will be providing an answer to every item in both the civil engineer and, uh, the envi, the environmental peer review letter issued by Beals and Thomas.
Thank you. Mr. Hill?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions, if I could, to the Chair. Uh, with respect to the wildlife study, um, will the applicant allow Beals and Thomas, at least, to accompany Mr. Goddard when he's out on the site looking at the vernal pools? Because that's something that I think the commission was asking for, and it's something that our wetland scientists had, had recommended, so that there's independent verification as to what's going on and what the quality of those pools are.
Mr. Engler?
Uh, I don't think we would have any issue with, uh, if Stacy wanted to coordinate with Ryan or Scott when they're going to be doing some field work. I don't think we have any objection to that.
Thank you.
All right, let me, I know we don't have any objection to that.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, if I may, um, with respect to, uh, the water pressure issue that was raised by, uh, peer review and, and raised by our consultants as well, it, it, could the applicant, uh, give any, uh, response to that tonight? Will there be any kind of water capacity analysis study done? Given that this is a really significant issue. Um, there's no water there today. A water main extension is being proposed, and a water line is being proposed, basically 75 feet above School Street to get to the top of the hill.
We will be providing additional information on that issue, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask what that information is and when will it be provided?
Um, well, we're having a big meeting on it tomorrow, Dan, so, you know, hopefully shortly thereafter.
Okay.
Okay, and just one, one last, one last issue, if I may, Madam Chair, that you guys have covered most of my, my checklist. There was, just on, on the issue of the vernal pools, one of the major, um, omissions that John Chesey had flagged is a, a lack of a water budget analysis on the vernal pools. And I don't know if, uh, Stacy Minahan may have an opinion on this as well, but that, that, that seems to be one of the most significant environmental impact issues here, is the impact of the hydrology recharge. Um, the project is recharging by a factor of 55 increase of recharge, uh, as compared to current conditions. And that's going to have a significant impact on the hydrology of the site. And so we, we had requested that there be a water budget analysis for the vernal pools that are all around the site as well as in the middle of the site. Is, is that something that the board would, would consider asking the applicant to provide? And, and maybe Miss Minahan could, could comment on that issue.
Yeah, I would ask, um, Beals and Thomas to respond to that.
Sure. Um, so we did ask in our request for additional information for evaluation um, as to wetland resource area hydrology and particularly vernal pools, whether or not the hydrology would be changed. Um, it has to, not only with the stormwater management system, but also if there will be blasting and things like that. Um, you know, we'd want discussion and analysis whether there will be increases in the hydrology or decreases, um, but, because both can affect the vernal pool functioning.
Great, thank you.
Um, Sarah Pierce, have your hand raised?
Thank you, yes. Sarah Pierce, I just wanted to, I don't want to go backwards, but I would just like to say as a very concerned resident about this project that this is a public hearing, as everyone knows, but I would like to hear from the zoning board members if they have a true concern, um, like Jim Dietrich did initially about a similar project. Um, if those, if those types of issues could be answered by the applicant. And also, um, as far as listening and being able to hear from attorneys like Mr. Hill, who are representing the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust, since this is such a sensitive area, I think it's really important, especially with the short timeline, that we are able to hear from these people who are specialists, attorneys, and, um, everyone's concerns are heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Engler, do you have a response regarding whether you have dealt with a project on a site that is this environmentally sensitive and has the large infrastructure requirements? Where?
Well, I would raise two projects. And first of all, it's not my experience as, as wordeners or general contractors and our teams. They're the one building the project, not me. But let me, let me talk about very briefly two projects. One project's in Winchester that Mr. Hill knows very well. He represented in a budding group that litigated and lost um, on a project. And, uh, there was extensive blasting, earthwork, uh, ledge removal, all sorts of stuff. You could drive by the site now. It's 416 Cambridge Street in Winchester. Um, ton of topography, all sorts of, uh, um, you know, earth moving. Uh, it was similar to this site in that regard, a much smaller site, 96-unit rental project, but I would say a denser project, in fact, than what we're talking about here. And then I'm, uh, have construction currently ongoing on a project in Situate that was in the floodplain, close to the waterway, had an onsite treatment plant close to resource areas, the ocean, riverfront. We had to bring in 17,000 cubic, uh, tons of soil to raise the grade up to be out of the floodplain. We, we, we needed all sorts of state permits. Um, it's on a state highway. So that was a very, very complicated, environmentally sensitive project. Um, so I would, I would point to those two. But once again, it's not me. It's, it's what contractor, what's their experience? You know, how, how are they going to deal with this project? So, you know, that, that, that's my answer on that question.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any additional item that you feel we need to request of the applicant?
Not at this time, Sarah.
Thank you, Catherine. Brian?
No, again, um, I know what I don't know. I just need more information before I can ask these questions.
Okay. Uh, Sean?
Uh, the only concern I have, Sarah, is, um, any kind of timeline that they're talking about with, uh, the study of, um, wildlife impact that they're looking at. Because it's kind of, we've got to be concerned about the breeding periods and all that, so I'm kind of worried about the timeframe. I don't want to see that get extended beyond, we don't get an actually good study.
Mr. Engler and Mr. Goddard, can you explain what your timeline is?
Uh, I would defer to Scott relative to the duration, but I can tell you for sure that it's already begun because we recognize that now is a good time to start the study. So, um, Scott, if you want to give some indication... So, Scott, if you want to give some indication or estimate on how long that study will take?
Hey Jeff, it's Ryan. Madam Chair, Ryan Rosine from Goddard Consulting, Scott had to hop off. In relation to that, yes, this, we've already started, vernal pool season has barely, barely, barely started, if anything has started. So, we are well within the timeframe, and this will be going on throughout the breeding season. And, you know, we'll be, we'll continue to work on that and everything. So, we are well, we're well into it.
How long is a breeding season typically?
Between, most breeding activity takes place between just about starting now till the end of April, about, give or take a few weeks.
Okay.
So, four, four to six, four to six, eight, maybe eight weeks in total.
Okay.
And so, Sarah, I just want to reiterate, we definitely need details on that to be provided after the public hearing, about what exactly is being done and when. And I believe the applicant earlier agreed that the peer reviewer could accompany on the, the applicant's consultants on some of that field work for some independent verification of what's going on, so maybe they could coordinate that as well. But we definitely need confirmation of the scope of that provided in the meantime, as earlier requested.
Okay, thank you. James Mitchell, did you have anything?
We've covered a lot of ground and asked a lot of questions, I don't have anything new to add. I will reiterate the concern many board members have had about the time constraints here, and I'm just hoping we can get this information in a timely manner in order for us to properly evaluate it and consider all the details.
Okay. Or is there any member of the public that wishes to raise anything else in this public hearing? On this topic? These topics? Becky Jakes?
Hi Sarah, now I just, this is for a point of clarification, I just wonder if Sarah Pierce would give her address for Gail Hunter to be able to put into the minutes? Thank you.
Hi, it's Sarah Pierce, Nine Friends Street, Manchester.
Thank you. Okay.
And Sarah, one thing I just wanted to mention, you were probably going to do it, but I think the town planner maybe would, would be able to do it, but someone should confirm with the applicant in writing to at least that extension that was agreed to tonight, and that should be filed in the town clerk's office. So, it would be good if there could be follow-up on that.
Yep, I'll have Gail Hunter do that.
Great.
So now we move to trying to figure out the next meeting. So it sounds like we can't return to environmental and engineering until April 13. But maybe that's a bad date, because maybe that's a normal... Yeah, no, April 13th would be okay. We have architectural on tap for April 6. Is there anything people feel we should circle back around on prior to that? That's a long time.
Sarah, I did, I did not have April 6th calendared, I had April 13th, and then the 27th, anticipating you were doing the Wednesday schedule that you had been following. I'm available, I, I've reserved the other Wednesday with, for you, the March 23rd, April 13, and April 27, but I'm triple booked for the night of the 6th. I didn't know you were planning on having a session that night.
Well, because we're running out of time, and nobody's ready to do anything on the 23rd, which was another date.
Yeah, could you move maybe the 6th back to the 30th, perhaps, or?
The architecture, architect is out of the country. So the earliest he could do it was in April 6, so I can't move him back. And it doesn't seem to me like environmental and engineering will be ready until the 13th. So that would push architectural to the 27th.
Yeah, I mean, is it, are you flexible at all on days of the week, that week of April 6? Because I am available on the 5th or 7th. I don't want to inconvenience you, but I just had not reserved that particular Wednesday.
Are members of the board available on April 5th or 7th? Tuesday or Thursday?
I can make that work, Sarah.
This is Catherine, I can do the 5th, but not the 7th.
Okay.
5th works for me, this is Brian.
Okay, Sean?
Either way, Sarah.
Okay, Jim?
Fine with both those dates, Sarah.
And James?
I'll make either date work.
Okay, so we will do architectural on April 5th instead of 6, hopefully the architect is available. Therefore, I will make a motion to continue the public hearing of the 40B application of Jeffrey Angler of SLV School Street LLC, filed with the town clerk on April 27, 2021, to continue the meeting to April 5th at 7 o'clock PM.
Second.
Second, take a roll call vote. Sean?
Agreed.
Ryan?
Agreed.
James?
Agreed.
Jim?
Agreed.
John?
Yes.
Catherine?
Agreed.
And Sarah votes yes. So we will continue this public hearing to April 5th, and do the architectural review.
Madam Chair, could I make a friendly suggestion?
Yes.
You did get a traffic letter back from Vanoss two days ago. You, you could potentially add traffic to the 5th, try to wrap that up.
Thank you, we'll do that, yes. Sounds good, thank you very much. Okay. We are now going to move on to administrative matters, which is to review minutes. Did anyone have a chance to look at the meeting minutes from January 13?
Are you also with counsel, Sarah?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
And Beals and Thomas as well?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all, have a good night.
I saw it, I reviewed it, it was fine.
I was able to review, Sarah.
I'm sorry, what date are we looking at, January 26?
13th.
13th, I did read, I had a few typos, which I can submit tomorrow, but otherwise, I'm fine with the content.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 13th with Catherine's typographical edits? Sean makes the motion, we'll second it.
Second.
Ryan seconds it. Take a roll call vote, Sean?
Approved.
Ryan?
Approved.
James?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Sarah approves, thank you. Next set of minutes is from April 26.
April 26?
That'd be weird.
Right?
I had a chance to review those, Sarah.
You didn't review them, Brian?
Not April's, no.
No, January 26.
Oh, I've seen those, yes.
Oh yeah, right?
Do I, any changes to those minutes?
I, Catherine, had no changes.
Sean, didn't you have some spelling issues?
I did. Yeah, that was the one, I was just trying to, I was trying to find it, because I couldn't, all of a sudden I lost it, but that was the one I sent in to Gail to correct, because she has test after, instead of text, on all mic, so.
Did you get those changes, Gail?
I, I got them and I input them, and when they go to the permanent record, they will be correct.
Thank you.
No doubt.
Do I have a motion to approve the April, January 26 minutes with the, the changes requested by Sean?
So moved.
Jim? Have a second?
I'm second.
Second, roll call vote, Sean?
Approved.
Ryan?
Yes, approved.
James?
Approved.
John?
Yes, approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approves.
And Sarah approves. I have some relatively subs, a relatively substantial change to the minutes from February 9.
Sarah, this is Catherine, I'm just going to tell you, I haven't read them yet.
Okay.
I just haven't had a chance to review with all the information we've been getting in, I prioritized the first two.
Okay.
I haven't had a chance to read, so you can go ahead with your changes, but I'm just going to tell you that I haven't read it yet, so I don't know.
I mean, I'll send them to Gail, but the thing that was missing was the list of requests that you captured and was approved by the board, and then, then, then we forward to the applicant in writing his request, so I'll get that to Gail.
And also set of revised minutes that we can then look at, so we don't all have to make the same revisions?
Yep.
Sarah, can I put that, can I put your letter in there in a PDF?
Sure.
So that would cover everything that was requested?
Right, but we just need to have in the minutes the fact that we made a list of requests that the board approved, and then, and instructed the Chair to send it to the applicant.
Yeah, I can, I, I can do that for you and send it to you.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know why I left that out.
I don't know, but it was a long meeting.
Apologies, I don't have any time to review that last set of minutes, I'm trying to keep up here.
I know, it's... Tell me about it.
You're doing awesome, by the way.
Is there anything else we need to cover tonight?
Any, any talk of going live?
Oh, I went to a meeting this morning, for the hybrid meeting. It lasted an hour and a half.
And?
It's not quite ready for prime time. It's very complicated. You need three computers. We're, we're going to have a walkthrough for the board, and people will have to agree to help in certain components of it.
But, so, are we dead set that we're going, from going forward, all meetings are going to be hybrid? And we can't go back to pre-COVID issues, pre-COVID meetings?
It's my understanding that the Board of Selectmen has determined going forward that we should have hybrid meetings, because they feel there's greater participation in the community. But we would meet in person. Oh, Jeffrey Bodnar Turner's raised his hand, I'll let him speak to that. Jeffrey Bodnar Turner, Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
Hi Catherine, this is Jeff Bodnar Turner.
Hi Jeff.
The, the board is invested a lot of money, for one thing, in the hybrid system. And the consensus, the board, and the vote of the board, actually, is that we would go forward with hybrid into the future for as long as it seems practical to do this. One of the great features of the meeting that we had this morning was it was the first time that all the technology people met with all the chairs, met with the chairs of Planning Board, CBA, and Selectmen, who are going to be the primary users of this model in terms of the way that it's being put forth, and they learned a lot about how we operate. So, that was, that was a good exchange of information, but there's a lot of questions that have to be finished, just like in your hearing.
So I think, Brian, the plan would be is that we would be in person, presenters would be in person, some public could be in person if they wanted, but then people would be able to participate via Zoom.
I think, that, I think is great, but I just, and, so, that, and that opens, that opens up the opportunity for a lot of the people to attend, I get, I get that part, but what about like next week? Oh, I read, are we going in person, or is, again, it's killing my battery here?
Um, I, Mr. Bodnar Turner?
I, just to clarify, the only members of the public who would be allowed to come to the meetings would be applicants and their consultants, and your, your consultants are their consultants and attorneys. The general public will not be, will be on Zoom until after July 15th, when the governor's order for the emergency condition in the state expires, unless the governor extends it. So up until that point, it will only be applicants.
Thank you. Catherine?
Oh, I just wanted to thank Mr. Bobbin Turner for his comments, and that I meant no disrespect, my internet's been cutting in and out here, so I probably didn't have the name right, and I probably sounded an idiot, but all that is an aid of servicing the town, and Mr. Bobbin Turner, I meant no disrespect, there.
Through the chair, no disrespect taken at all.
Thank you, sir.
People had trouble with my name for the last 26 years.
It was probably my pronunciation that was the issue.
Nine Streets not getting applauded, Catherine?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh please.
Ryan, you make a motion?
So moved.
Till your battery dies?
Yes, yes, I've got 18%, so I got, I got another five minutes.
I plugged my things in.
Well, I got it plugged in, the thing is...
I'll second the motion to adjourn. I'll take a roll call vote, Sean?
Approved.
Ryan?
Approved.
James?
We were having so much fun, but yes, reluctantly, I approve.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
You have your video on, Sarah approved.
Yeah, yeah, for the adjournment of the meeting.
Thank you all, and we have a site visit Saturday morning, and a regular ZBA meeting next month.
The 16th. Thank you.
And we only have two tennis pools next to each other. And we only have two tennis pools next to each other.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.